SJC 13284, Louise Barron and others v. Southborough Board of Selectmen and another.
Okay, Attorney Kramer.
Good morning. Good morning, and may it please the court, my name is Ginny Sinkel-Cramer, and I am counsel for Mrs. Louise Barron, the appellant in this case. In this case, the court will have to decide what protections the Declaration of Rights affords to the speech of citizens who are criticizing their elected government officials at a place and at a time that the government has opened for such speech.
Are any civility codes constitutional?
Your Honor, our position is that the civility code at issue in this case, as set forth in the policy and as applied, is unconstitutional because it is standardless and invites the use of content-based restrictions and regulations by public officials who do not wish to be criticized.
Is it possible to draft a constitutional civility code?
Your Honor, I guess that would depend on what you meant by civility code. You know, civility codes are problematic in that what is civil or not civil is in the eye of the beholder. And the biggest problem with civility codes is not just what happened to my client in this case, but this case, the facts of this case illustrate that she dared to criticize and was cut down from that. She was trying to inform her fellow citizens.
Would you concede that if your client started with the references, the hateful references to Hitler, that she should have been shut down?
Your Honor, I think that all of the cases, from this court's cases to cases by the United States Supreme Court, recognize that public officials need to be prepared for caustic and offensive criticism at times.
So if your client opened with, "I think you're Hitler," she should be allowed to speak?
Well, if my client opened with, "You are behaving like a fascist dictator," would that matter to you? If she said, "You are a criminal. You're behaving like a criminal because you violated the law on multiple occasions." Where do you draw the line? When somebody, in the case of support this, put themselves forth in front of voters and stepped forward to become an elected leader, they need to understand that their decisions are going to be subject to criticism, and sometimes it might even hurt their feelings.
So if your client stood up in this public comment and said, "I think you're a pedophile," is that okay? She should be allowed to speak?
Your Honor, where exactly you draw the line is thankfully not my job. My client did not say that. My client--
The question I have is, would that be okay under your view of the First Amendment in our state constitution?
To the extent that, you know, that speech constitutes name-calling or rude or insulting behavior, prior restraints on that or content-based restrictions are unconstitutional. Where you veer into accusing somebody of having committed a crime without any basis in fact is a different factual scenario than incurred in this case.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I didn't get an answer, but you can ask your question.
No, go ahead.
I'm not going to get one, so go ahead.
My question is to do with the forum, and that is, do we have to decide the issue of public forum or non-traditional forum in this case to resolve it?
Your Honor, I don't believe so, because I believe that whatever the forum is, this was content-based restriction by the Select Board.
Would the forum, the nature of the forum change the standard of review if it's content-based? I mean, would one be strict scrutiny, or?
Your Honor, this was a limited designated public forum, and the appropriate standard of review is definitely strict scrutiny.
We have to show that much? Isn't there a factual issue of what it is? This is a motion, judgment on the pleadings.
Correct, Your Honor.
So before you go and argue what it is, isn't there a factual dispute that has to be resolved as to what it is?
Well, Your Honor, the only factual dispute here is whether or not the policy restricts the limited designated forum to only residents of Southborough or not, and our position is it doesn't matter. You know, here is a resident of Southborough, so whether or not it was restricted or not, she is qualified to speak. She was recognized to speak. She followed all the rules. She waited her turn. So this is a situation where discovery needs to really resolve that issue. The town of Southborough makes a lot out of the, and so did the judge below, out of the one reference to having to state your address, as if people who don't live in Southborough somehow lack addresses, that limits it. But they're really just bootstrapping that limitation or that reference to addresses into trying to convince this court that this was a non-public forum, which is--
Well, can I just test you on that? Because the paragraph that you don't cite in the amended complaint is paragraph two of the policy, which clearly limits the forum to town residents.
Well, Your Honor, I would give you, concede that for purposes of this argument. I don't think that it matters, again, because I don't--
Or not you concede it. It's in paragraph two of the policy. It says town residents can speak at these forums.
Right, but that doesn't mean that nobody else can speak at these forums. I think that there's a lot of other language that talks about the public as opposed to town residents, so that's--
Can I just go back to your question about, or your point about content-based restrictions? Why do we even have to go there? I mean, isn't this viewpoint-based descriptions, which are restrictions, which are unconstitutional no matter what forum we are in?
Yes, Your Honor, I think that the policy, as well, you know, on its face and as applied, doesn't necessarily, on its face, engage in viewpoint-based discrimination. But certainly, Mr. Kalenda's actions in this case engaged in viewpoint discrimination because as soon as the plaintiff tried to bring to light a fact that Mr. Kalenda was, and the board was trying to keep under the radar, which was the Attorney General's recent findings of dozens more open meeting law violations, which the board used acronyms to describe.
So you're not any longer making a facial challenge to the policy? You're just saying, as applied, in this context, it is unconstitutional?
Facially and as applied, I think both.
All right, well, then facially, you kind of need to go to the actual words of the policy, right? And show that, under no circumstances is that constitutional.
I disagree, Your Honor.
Aye.
Because in most circumstances, it's unconstitutional, and I think that there are cases--
What is your legal authority for that being the test? That usually, 51% of the time, it's unconstitutional.
Your Honor, I believe that it cited, that particular line of cases is cited in the ACLU's brief, and I can find that reference for you.
Isn't it the line of cases that say, "If it interferes with a substantial amount of free speech on its face, then it can be declared unconstitutional," right?
Correct.
That's Perry in some of the Supreme Court cases that draw on that, right?
Correct, and that's because it goes to the chilling effect that this kind of restraint, these kinds of regulations have, because it leads to even self-policing. And I think that that is illustrated by Mr. Kalenda's announcement of those very buzzwords and phrases before entertaining public speak, is, "Don't you dare to offend me. Don't you dare to criticize this board." He was very selective in his rendition of which parts of the policy he called out. And when my client approached the board politely, without disruption, and not shouting, and was trying to bring to the board's attention and to the public's attention the fact of the Attorney General's findings, he immediately shut her down. So this is before the utterance of the term Hitler. This is before anything that could be called, by any stretch of any imagination, disruptive. He shut her down based on the language of the policy.
He shut her down, but at least for your civil rights claim, you're going to need him ordering, basically saying, "I'm going to bring in the cops if you don't shut up," right? You're not going to meet the threats intimidation and coercion requirement on your civil rights claim without going deeper into Hitler and the response to Hitler, right?
Well, I don't think that he did threaten to have her physically removed, and the complaint makes all of those allegations. I don't think, you know--
He did or he didn't. I thought he--
He did.
Yeah, but he doesn't do that until after she compares him to Hitler, right?
I don't think that that has any bearing on the analysis.
But counsel, are you appealing the civil rights claims?
Yes, the dismissal, yes, yes.
So, but I guess, back to, way to Justice Lowey's and Justice Wenzel's questions, we've got two different, we've got a facial challenge and an applied challenge. The facial challenge, and we also have a civil rights claim, and we also have a state and federal constitutional claim, so we're going to have to--
No federal constitutional claim.
You're not relying on the federal constitution?
No, it's just, it simply was remanded from the original complaint stated federal claims.
So just the state constitution you're relying on?
Correct, Your Honor.
And has the state constitution, in our state constitutional analysis, have we done this limited, I guess in the ACLU's brief, designated limited public forum? Have we gone into this morass, which the Supreme Court's done?
In some cases, it has been touched upon, but not in the context of this case, although there are two Superior Court cases. Judge Wilkins just rendered a decision.
Again, not precedent for us, so I--
Correct, but they set forth analyses that this court may want to become aware of in looking at this. There's a case out of Nantucket right now, in which Judge Wilkins dismissed, refused to dismiss the town's claims on the same, basically the same factual scenario. And there's also the Spalding case out of Natick that analyzes this court's precedent in what I believe is a useful way. So, but no, this court hasn't specifically addressed this factual scenario.
So the U.S. Supreme Court, again, so on the civil rights claim, I'm particularly concerned with. So we do need to sort of track through the whole factual scenario, right, on that?
Yes.
And--
As alleged in the complaint, drawing inference.
And do we, the U.S. Supreme Court, when they do their civil rights claims, they have a qualified immunity analysis. Do we do that on state civil rights claims, or do we not get into qualified immunity at all?
Your Honor, the qualified immunity issue is something that the Superior Court didn't even mention, and, you know, that defense depends upon contested facts, so I'm not sure that at this juncture, it's appropriate for this court to weigh in on that.
Speaking of contested facts, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Justice Caffrey--
No, no, go ahead.
But it, what?
Go ahead.
Oh, is that, you were mentioning before the open meeting law, and the judge, the Superior Court judge used that open meeting law conclusion or the finding as a factor in classifying the school board meeting as a designated public forum, correct?
Yes, it was not a school board, however. It was a select board.
Select board.
Which is actually a big difference.
Okay, but is it still true, though, that it was, that the open meeting law, she considered that, and it is a valid thing we can consider in the Selectmen meeting?
I'm confused by what part of the open meeting law was valid to consider.
Well, the judge said the fact that the open meeting law is another, just another factor to consider, that you have to have an open meeting, is another factor to consider in this public analysis, her decision.
I mean, I don't think that it really goes to the forum analysis. You know, this is--
Then let me ask you, does it have any impact on our conclusions, or how should we, how should we consider that attorney, the last Attorney General fact, finding, the one that is on this meeting that we're hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, Your Honor. I understand what you're saying. That there had not been an open meeting law violation with respect to the doctoring of the minutes. I don't think that it has any bearing on the resolution of this case.
Well, what were the fact, I mean, shouldn't we have that in front of us?
Well, Your Honor, we're not appealing the dismissal of the count--
On the open meeting laws. Right, and I mixed up the tort claims with the civil rights claims before, but I guess I don't understand why this is not a factor that we could look at, or can look at what the judge, the AG found on the open meeting law violation issue.
Because that was a very narrow finding, that the open meeting law wasn't violated, and we're not contesting that. So that, none of that--
None of that is relevant.
No, not our position.
Let me ask you again about your free speech absolutism. What about fighting words? So you raise a facial challenge. If we agree with you, and we say, "You're right, this, on its face, this statute violates free speech principles," what else do we say as far as fighting words, slanderous words?
Well--
Is someone being a pedophile? What do we say?
I mean, you know, Your Honor, I think that fighting words is--
Insurrectional words? I mean, you know, calls to arms, are those okay?
No, the term that I think is preferable to fighting words is words that are calculated to incite imminent violence. She was angry that she--
So it's okay to prohibit--
And she called them a name.
Okay, it's okay to prohibit that.
It's okay to prohibit incitement to imminent violence, yes.
All right, so I was trying to get to your absolutism. All right, thank you.
Yes.
What about differences in our interpretation of the Declaration of Rights as it relates to First Amendment issues? Are you familiar with the Walker versus Georgetown housing case?
Yes, I am, Your Honor.
What does that say about enhanced constitutional protections under the Declaration of Rights in this area?
Well, I think that this court has always left open the possibility that Article 16 is more expansive than First Amendment jurisprudence, but has never ruled on that in the context of facts presented here. But, you know, it certainly is, but I would argue that even under federal jurisprudence, this policy, on its face and as applied, is unconstitutional.
But you win even if it's only as applied?
Yes, we do. We win. And on that, I will close.
Thank you very much. Okay, Attorney Davis, good morning.
Good morning. May it please the court, John Davis, on behalf of the Southborough defendants. Nearly every public body that operates does so under a set of rules or guidelines, whether it's this court, or a legislative branch, or an executive branch.
Can I ask you to start with the as-applied challenge? I mean, here is a citizen, a resident of Southborough, who's voicing concerns about budgets and open meeting law violations, and then is shut down. And that's what the complaint says. Why isn't that quintessentially what the Article 16 is about, or the First Amendment?
Certainly, Your Honor. This court has followed public forum doctrine, and I would cite the Roman versus trustees case.
Yeah, but that was a First Amendment analysis, but be that as it may. Let's assume, best-case scenario, this is a limited public forum for you, right?
Right.
So you can have content-based, subject-matter restrictions, and restrictions on who may speak. Here's a Southborough resident speaking her concerns about issues of public concern. As applied, doesn't this at least go back? I mean, you're at the pleading stage.
You can have, if it's a limited public forum, you can have reasonable restrictions that are designed to--
And what is your theory that this is a reasonable restriction on speech, where you have a resident of the town voicing concerns about decisions on budget and decisions related to open meeting law violations? What is your theory of the case that this doesn't go forward?
Reasonable restriction on speech has to do with whether or not it disrupts the purpose of the forum. The purpose of the forum is significant, and the courts have said so, to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting.
But this is clearly, she's commenting on exactly what was mentioned, which is, there are numerous open meeting law violations, and she's saying, "You're violating this statute." And then he's saying, "That's slander." I don't understand how it's possibly slander, especially for a public official. "I'm relying on the slander language in the policy," and he's misapplying it. Isn't this a clear, I mean, you can't dismiss this on the pleadings on the applied challenge?
I think if that were, if it had ended there, Your Honor, if Ms. Barron, in response to Mr. Kalenda's remarks, said, "Well, I still think you're violating the open meeting law," and he had then pulled the plug at that point in time, we'd have a different case.
Well, no, you wouldn't, because you already have, you already have a violation. He's already basically turning off the meeting at that point. So as applied, this is clearly, it seems incorrect, isn't it?
At that point in time, he is applying the public participation policy, the public comment portion of the public participation policy, which prohibits slanderous or rude or personal language.
Slanderous or rude?
It's accurate.
But then, as the court below said, that, I would have a problem with that. The judge below said, "If it weren't limited, if it weren't limited by other restrictions in the public participation policy, such as you cannot use inappropriate language." And it doesn't define inappropriate language, but the inappropriate language, I would interpret to mean that you can't have, you can't have slant, you can't have vile epithets, you can't have--
I'm sorry, I guess the most problematic part of the policy is the word offensive for words, right? So if the citizen got up and said, "I think spending is reasonable and under control, and I know you folks violate the open meeting law, but you're doing your best job, and we thank you for your service," everything's fine, right? That's not offensive, right? That citizen would be allowed to speak.
Right.
Citizen plaintiff says the exact opposite, and she's shut down. Isn't that just content-based?
Well, Your Honor, I would argue that, to the extent she goes over the line, I mean, offensive, I agree.
I get the Hitler part, which comes after she shut down, so take that aside. This is just the two things about spending and open meeting law violations. So what's offensive about that?
And she spoke about the expense, the expenses, you're spending like drunken sailors.
Right.
And she wasn't interrupted. She was not called on that. She then asked questions about the town administrator and asked to engage with the board, and they said, "No, we don't do that during public comment."
We don't have a rule that says only erudite people get to speak, right?
No, understood.
She gets to say, "Spending like drunken sailors."
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that that was a violation.
What was the violation? What's the offense?
He warned her, consistent with the, he warned her, and maybe he should not have warned her.
Wait, this is starting to sound familiar. It sounds like he warned her, and she kept speaking.
No, and then, after he warned her, consistent with the policy, she said, "You're acting like a Hitler. You're a Hitler. I can say what I want."
Right, then she did, yes.
It already happened.
And so that's the case that--
It's already happened. He shut it down before that, before--
And maybe, just let's go back to my question. I know what you're being ping-ponged a little bit, and maybe, I don't know if you're being offended, but I'm sure you're not. I'm sure you're mildly, but anyway, be that as it may. Give me the why it's offensive, you know, when we have the pro-government versus the anti-government speakers. Why is the anti-government person offensive?
I'm focusing on the language she used.
But what language?
That you're a Hitler.
But that comes after--
And he hadn't cut, he did interrupt her, and she had interrupted him before, and he interrupted her, and he interrupted her, and he said, "If you're going to," and she said, "I'm not slandering," then we will, and then she said, "You're a Hitler." So he hadn't, he hadn't cut her off.
You know, what Daniel Patrick Moynihan said, "You're entitled to your own opinion, but not your own facts." You're not entitled to your own facts.
I'm sorry, Your Honor.
And, okay. So ma'am, if you want to slander town officials who are doing their very best, he brings up slandering.
Correct.
That's him. "I'm not slandering," then he says, "Then we're going, gonna go ahead and stop the public comment session and go ahead to recess." That's what happened. You can't rearrange the facts.
Understood, Judge.
Before Hitler, he's done.
So that's, yes, Your Honor, that's exactly what he said, and then she said what she said, and then he said, "We're going into recess." He didn't say, "We're going into recess" before she said Hitler.
But it did stop the public comment session.
He did not, he did not--
He didn't stop the public comment session?
He did not.
I thought the tape was turned off, too.
No, it was not turned off until she called him a Hitler. And then he says, his next words are, "We're going into recess," and then the silence.
What I have is, "I'm not slandering," and then Kalenda says, "Then, then, we're gonna go ahead and stop the public comment session and go ahead to recess." And that's when she makes the Hitler comment.
Correct, yes. And after she makes the Hitler comment, he says, "All right, we're going into recess." That's the sequence, Your Honor.
But again, this is a decision on the pleadings. It's not a trial.
Understood.
Can I, can I talk, walk you through, because I find the facial challenge more difficult. "So all remarks and dialogue in public meetings must be respectful and courteous, free of rude, personal, or slanderous remarks." So that's a lot. Doesn't, if you brought the Declaration of Independence to the meeting, would that violate that provision?
That was, the judge below had concerns about that, Your Honor, and she, but she went on to read the document as a whole, and that's, and when you've got a facial challenge, what you try to do is read it--
But I don't know, but again, the standard is, is a substantial amount of free speech going to be blocked by this, or is it so open-ended that it's going to allow kind of discretionary decision-making that's inappropriate? I just don't know what all these words mean. I mean, personal, I mean, again, the Declaration of Independence is directed at King George, a lot of it. I mean, this is personal, yes, she's saying, "You're violating the open meeting law." I mean, personals, I mean, there's a difference between calling you a pedophile, right, if you're not a pedophile, versus saying, "You're violating the meeting law." They're both personal, but they're different, right?
And then the judge below said that so long, if those weren't words that you've just read, Your Honor, were not limited, she would have a problem with it.
Limited by what?
If they were limited--
What are they limited by?
By further language within the same paragraph.
What?
Inappropriate language is not allowed, and I interpret that to mean that, like, true threats, or fighting words, or profane lewd--
Shouting, shouting makes complete sense to me. Shouting is a manner of speech. It's not a content of speech.
Right.
But inappropriate, I don't know what that means. Respectful and courteous seems to be, if I'm saying, "You're a wise lawyer," as opposed to, "You're a dumb lawyer," you know, it has a substantive component to it, doesn't it?
It does, Your Honor, but it also got down to the--
So I'm allowed to say, "You're wise," but I'm not allowed to say, "You're stupid?"
You can say whatever you like.
But, I mean, that, isn't that what the problem with this is?
Well, the language of the policy also includes a provision with respect to disruptive behavior.
Right, but we have to deal with the relevant challenge language, which is, "Respectful and courteous, free of rude, personal, and slanderous remarks." We don't get to read that on the pleadings in terms of the whole policy. Why do you think that we get to do that?
Well, I understood, Your Honor was asking about the facial challenge, and a facial challenge, you're supposed to try to read it as narrowly as you can so that it is not unconstitutional, and it's presumed to be constitutional. So if you can, and as the judge below did, she read it narrowly.
And how do you apply respectful, courteous, free of rude, personal, and slanderous remarks, other than depending on the viewpoint of the hearer?
If rude, personal, or slanderous remarks disrupt the meeting and interfere with the business of government, then I think that the board is entitled to shut it down, because now, that's a reasonable restriction based upon the fact that we are here to conduct government business. We are here to conduct the business of the town.
And so, in that context, we can't talk about the personal conduct of the Selectmen?
Oh, yes, you can. Yes, you can, so long as it's not disruptive. I think, I think once you get, once you go, I mean, calling somebody a Hitler ends the conversation. It's not, it's not, it's not a way to advance the public discourse.
Well, so does closing the public meeting.
Yes, it does, and so that's another issue. If this court says that that sort of speech below sets the floor, and that's okay going forward, the next public participation policy, people are going to be saying even worse things, and they're going to cite Barron versus Southborough. I don't see how--
Well, I mean, they could cite Barron versus Southborough for the proposition that you don't get to discriminate against somebody based on the viewpoint of the hearer. That is Justice Gazziano's point, I think, that something that is complimentary would be allowed, but something critical would no longer be allowed. And that is quintessentially viewpoint discrimination, isn't it?
I would think, yes, I would agree. If some, just because it's somebody is criticizing, I think you can criticize government officials. I think they can do that. I think somebody can come to the public comment.
The First Amendment and Article 16, so.
So, yes, they can do that, but when it become, when you interfere with the business of the government by disrupting the meeting, calling somebody a pedophile, I don't think that would, I mean, there are gray areas, but there are some that are clearly beyond the pale, and I think when you-
Right, and so couldn't you have a policy that goes to the conduct of the participant? That is, no shouting, no obscenity, you know, things like that, as opposed to the viewpoint, which is personal and slanderous remarks? I mean, isn't slander in and of itself a viewpoint, depending on whether it calls somebody into disrepute?
Yes, yes, it is.
Right, and so including that in the policy seems to be problematic, because it quintessentially is viewpoint discrimination, it's a viewpoint designation, because it depends on how the public hears it. It calls somebody's reputation into question.
Only, I agree, Your Honor, to the extent you look at it in isolation. If you look at rude, personal, and slanderous remarks in isolation, it's problematic.
So if that were the only part of the policy, you agree that this would go forward?
If that were the only part of the policy, "Don't be rude, don't use personal remarks, and because if you do, we're going to shut you down."
And so your theory is that in context, as a whole, the policy is about controlling the decorum of these public comment sections of the selectmen's meeting?
Yes, Your Honor.
If you took your pen to this policy, you would certainly strike out the word rude, correct?
I would probably make a few edits, Your Honor.
Okay.
Your Honor, but I do think that, again, when we're faced with a facial challenge, we're required to look at it as a whole, and that's what the judge below did. She looked at it as a whole, and said, when you, and she wrote a declaratory, she wrote declarations consistent with the DJ request, and she wrote declarations that pursuant to the law would uphold this public participation policy, so that they could go forward.
Can I ask a couple of sort of particular questions? Hitler, the Hitler comment, which is different from the pedophile comment, because pedophile is implying, is this an opinion? I mean, she's not really calling him, she doesn't think he's, you know, invaded Eastern Europe and killed 6 million people. She's using a metaphor, right? So, is, I mean, it's rude, and it's disparaging, but it's, is it even, I mean, I just don't know what you do. It's clearly, it's not a fact-based statement, is it? I mean, I just don't know how you deal with-
It's a vile epithet, I mean, and you can come up with others. I mean, and if this is going to be okay, if that's okay-
Not saying it's okay. I'm just trying to understand it, what it is, because it's really, it's a statement of opinion, and it's a rude statement of opinion, but it's not, I mean, I just don't know how you, how we calculate that, how we figure it. And then, I understand your point on that one. The second one is, the motion, I think the motion judge finds that there's no threats, intimidation, or coercion here, because the open meeting law allows you to remove someone. Is that what she does?
That was part of her decision, yes, Your Honor.
But I don't, that allows you to remove someone if you're not violating the Constitution. If you are violating the Constitution, isn't it satisfy the threats, intimidation, and coercion requirement, because it's just like Glofsky, and it's just like the other case we've got, where you're threatening to remove someone from a room?
Well, if she, pursuant to the open meeting law-
If she, if it's, if, I understand you don't think it's a constitutional violation.
Right.
But if it is, if we decide that it is a constitutional violation, and he's threatening to remove her, doesn't it meet the state's civil rights threats, intimidation, and coercion requirement as well?
And I guess this court would also have to hold that that provision of the open meeting law, that says that the presiding officer can warn and then ask someone who is disrupting a meeting to leave, that's what he did.
No, there's a difference, though. If, for example, if the speaker keeps saying, "You've got five minutes, your five minutes is over, and I'm going to remove you if you keep talking," that's not interfering with the constitutional right. But if he's threatening to remove her unconstitutionally, isn't that a Civil Rights Act violation? And the open meeting law assumes that you're acting permissibly, doesn't it? You can't remove someone from a meeting for violating the Constitution, and, I mean, if you're violating the Constitution, you can't remove them, right?
Well, I think that's, the first element of the microclaim is you have to show interference, or threat, or-
By threats, intimidation?
So I would agree with you, Judge, that may be interference, but it doesn't necessarily rise to threats, intimidation, or coercion. If you, just because you have interfered, now you have to show, under the micro statute, you have to go that next route. It's not Section 1983, where the interference alone would be enough.
I know, but my understanding is-
Threatening to remove somebody for exercising the First Amendment right, isn't that a threat?
If it's a direct violation, no. If it's a direct violation under the Longval case, when you say, "Get out," and they get out, that's not a threat. And the court here said that it's not a threat, because it was an angry reaction, it was an angry reaction to an outburst from Ms. Barron. So, again, I wouldn't concede that there's, there were threats, intimidation, and coercion here, just if, because if this court decides that that speech is protected under Article 16.
So if she was engaging in speech that she was allowed to do, and he says, "I'm going to remove your, have the constable remove you," that's not a threat, because the open meeting law allows him to remove her?
I would maintain it's not interference with her rights by means of a threat, intimidation, or coercion.
I don't, I, isn't that the exact opposite of what the cases say? If you just took them away, it might be different, but he's threatening to take her away if she keeps talking, and that seems to be a classic threats, intimidation, coercion. Plus, I'm misreading those cases.
No, and I would have to agree that if this court were to find that her speech is protected by Article 16, then we're probably in an area where there's a question of fact with respect to threats, intimidation, and coercion.
Right.
But I would also remind the court that we did raise qualified immunity below, and this court can uphold the decision below.
That's the question I asked your sister. I don't know the answer to. We've not applied qualified immunity to mass Civil Rights Act cases.
Yes, you have.
We have? Which cases?
Duarte case.
So we have said, not only do you need to violate the constitutional right to get a Civil Rights Act claim, and you have to violate a clearly established?
Yes, Your Honor.
Which case is that?
Duarte versus Healy, I believe.
Okay.
And there's no factual dispute about when the meeting ended, or was?
No, no, there is not.